At seven o'clock P M, Madam Clerk, please. Councilmember Tucker?
Here.
Councilmember Obi C Martinez here. Councilmember Mendoza?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Amparano?
Here.
And Mayor Burn?
Here.
Everybody, please stand both hands in the wings. Ready? Okay. Do we have any adjustments to tonight's agenda? Yes.
Yes.
Yes, Madam Mayor, there are two claim or two warrants on your claims and warrants report that would need to be held out for separate action.
Ms. Turner, do we have any action taken in closed session?
Yes, the council discussed two, three items of anticipated litigation with council and direction was given, no reportable action. The council also discussed real property negotiations related to item A two. Agency negotiator was given direction. That concludes my report.
Moving on to item C, public appearances. Matt is not appearing on the agenda. If you wish to address the council concerning any item within the council's jurisdiction, please raise your hand and be acknowledged by the mayor. At that time, state your name and address for the record. The mayor reserves the right to place a time limit on each person's presentation of three minutes. It is requested that longer presentations be submitted to the council in writing. Do we have any public comments for tonight? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, did we get any submitted via email? Thank you. Moving on to item D, special presentations, we have employee introductions.
Madam Mayor, members of the council. Unfortunately, my new parks employee wasn't able to attend tonight, but Carlos Becerra has just been on boarded with the Parks Department as a new full-time position, so we welcome him to the city's park staff and crew and we're expecting great things out of him. Welcome.
There in the city council, I take great pleasure in introducing Officer Michael Cortez. He's an Imperial Valley residence, and although he was a Spartan, he now lives here and with his wife and kids and raising them as Tigers. He comes to us by way of I C S O, seven years experience, and we're happy to have him. He's, he's, he's through most of his training and he'll be going out there and being an asset for us, so we're glad to have him.
Welcome.
Welcome to the city.
We have two new in the Public Works Department. We have Christian Felix and Francisco.
I give.
I give. Started in March, one is streets and one is general.
Welcome.
At all of them? Okay. Are they okay from the H R? Now, we're gonna move on to item T two for Autism Awareness Month, and we have a proclamation declaring April twenty twenty-three as Autism Awareness Month and April second, two thousand twenty-three as World Autism Awareness Day in the City of Imperial. Whereas autism is a result of a neuro- neurological disorder that affects the normal functioning of the human brain and can affect anyone regardless of race, ethnicity, gender, or socio- socioeconomic background. And whereas symptoms and characteristics of autism may present themselves in a variety of combinations and can result in significant lifelong impairment of an individual's ability to learn, develop healthy interactive behaviors, and understand verbal as well as non-verbal communication. And whereas the autism spectrum disorder is a reality that affects millions of families every day and more children are being diagnosed resulting in rates as high as one in thirty-six children nationally with four times greater prevalence among boys than girls according to the Centers for Disease Control. And whereas while our nation has made progress in supporting those with A S D, we're only beginning to understand the factors behind the challenges they face. And as the effort to address autism continues, doctors, therapists, and educators can help individuals with autism overcome or adjust to its challenges and provide early, accurate diagnosis, appropriate education, intervention, and therapy that are vital to the future growth and development. And whereas in April, we recognize those with autism achieving and breaking down barriers and recommit to helping those on the autism spectrum reach their full potential at all times. And whereas the City of Imperial, California proudly supports the annual observance of Autism Awareness Month and Autism and World Autism Awareness Day in the hope that it will lead to a better understanding of the autism spectrum disorder, celebrating the work of advocates, professionals, and family members and all who work to build a brighter tomorrow alongside those with autism. Now thereby be resolved, I Catherine Burnworth, Mayor of the City of Imperial, hereby proclaim April twenty twenty-three as Autism Awareness Month and April second, two thousand twenty twenty-three as World Autism Awareness Day in the City of Imperial to raise public awareness, acceptance, and inclusion of those with autism in the myriad of issues surrounding the disorder as well to increase the knowledge of the programs that have been and are being developed to support individuals with autisms and their families. If we can have imper- or ace the guy or autism of Imperial County come up. Yes.
Hi.
Hello.
Sorry about the giggles there. Sometimes city council meetings give him the giggles. Sometimes we know it can be a serious business, but.
I wish they gave me the giggles more.
So, uh, thank you, Mayor. Mayor Pro Tem, city council members and cousin. First, you know, let me say thank you to all you. You're all awesome. Of course, in, in our neck of the woods, we spell awesome a little bit differently. A U S O M E. That's the way we spell awesome. What can I say? We're just finishing up the touches of this year Autism Awareness Fair, thanks to Tony and his team. All the booths have been booked. The music has been booked. The voluntolds for the dunk tank have graciously accepted that they've been told to volunteer. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. And we're hoping that next year we get some more volunteers from, from some of our council members and then some, then the voluntolds that we had to do this year. It's been a, an awesome year for A S I C. Last year, at this time, we were just putting together the inaugural autism fair. And in that time, we had the fair. We brought Temple Grandin into speak, and if you know who Temple Grandin is, and if you don't, she's the most prominent person in autism throughout the United States. We had our annual baseball game hosted by Southwest High School versus Central, and both schools handed out school letters for the I C O E students, which is something special because they can't earn it academically. They can't earn it scholastically. In, in reality, they just can't earn a letter at all, and my, my son has his own Lenderman's jacket now. He likes scats, so I found one. Leave it alone, buddy. We also got the privilege of attending this year's autism acceptance game at Peko Park where the San Diego Padres were hosting the Arizona Diamondbacks. It was a great game. They ended up giving us a bunch of San Diego Padre autism hats. They also, you know, in the bottom ninth inning walked off the Diamondbacks, sorry Diamondback fans, with back-to-back homers, so it was another great day. Plus all our events that we've had throughout the year, only to come back full circle to this year's autism awareness fair. You know, it's, it's, I have to thank you guys, the, the Parks and Recreation Department, the Police Department, the Fire Department, and your entire staff, the entire city. You know, it's, it's, the autism fair is not just for families, but especially those for individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities. To be able to put something together like that at this magnitude is just, you know, I'll never get used to saying the word awesome. I also want to thank Gloria Bambilla, she helped put the proclamation together. I know it was, it was long, but it's all, every single word in there means so much, as well as the, the work she does throughout the community. I want to thank the A S I C board members and coordinators. Without them, anything we do throughout the year just isn't possible. You know, and, and although this might feel like I'm receiving some sort of award show or rather award show, just thanking everybody that we can. In true honesty, that's because it really is. I mean, you guys have given us a very special gift to have an autism fair. You know, and, and it's not just for the City of Imperial, it's not just for the autistic community, but it's for the entire county, and, and we hope that it just gets bigger and better every year. So having said that, all I can say is, is again, thank you, and I hope to see you all at Eager Park between twelve P M and five P M. And it's gonna be an awesome event. What do you think, buddy? Is it gonna be awesome? Yes, yes, say thank you. Say thank you.
You're welcome. Now, I just wanna thank you for all the hard work you do. This is such like, it holds such a special place in my heart. When I was in college and it's in a sorority, our national philanthropy that we supported was Autism Speaks. And at that time, I had really only known one person who his grandparents helped founded this, and so obviously now I have a few more kids that are special to my heart that have been diagnosed with autism, and the resources you guys provide for families are amazing. So, thank you.
And we just try our best to, to help provide knowledge and experience and, and information to, to parents. We're just parents sharing with other parents our experiences.
You provide a community, so there's no parent should have to go through it alone, and that's priceless, so. Thank you for all you do for not only our constituents, but for everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you for everything. And I, and I do look forward to Saturday. You know what? And you know what? Well, we should, I, I got told today and said, hey, I heard at our K X O that you're gonna be dunked. I was like, absolutely.
Don't worry, I'm going in the dunk tank too, so you can get me back.
There you go.
Emmy, I just wanted to say, you know, I was at El Central City Council meeting last night whenever they came in. And whenever I saw you here tonight and you were alone, I was gonna say, I'm, I'm offended that we don't have anybody leading our pledge of allegiance, but at least we got him here for the, the acceptance of the award.
We'll try to get him here earlier next.
Beef? Got a spot up here for you. We got a spot up here for you. You're part of, you're part of the team here.
And if there's any way we can get a copy of that picture. Alright, thank you.
So now we're moving on to item D three, which is Donate Life Month. Donate, National Donate Life Month proclamation, whereas organ, eye, tissue, marrow, and blood donation are life-giving acts recognized worldwide as expressions of compassion to those in need. Whereas more than a hundred and six thousand individuals nationwide and more than twenty thousand in California are currently on the national organ transplant waiting list, and on average seventeen people die each day while waiting. Whereas the need for organs, for donated organs is especially urgent in Hispanic, Latino, and African-American communities. Whereas a single individual's donation of heart, lungs, liver, kidneys, pancreas, and small intestine can save up to eight lives. Whereas donation of tissue can save and heal the lives of more than seventy-five others. Whereas organ donors saved more than forty thousand lives last year, the most ever. Whereas any person can register to be an organ, eye, and tissue donor regardless of age or medical conditions. Whereas being a registered donor does not impact the quality of life-saving medical care a person receives in emergency. Whereas California residents can sign up with the Donate Life California Donor Registry online at any time by visiting donatelifecalifornia.org, or for Spanish speakers, donavita california.org. Whereas California residents can sign up to be an organ, eye, and tissue donor when applying for or renewing their driver's license or I D cards at the California Department of Motor Vehicles. Whereas Californian residents interested in saving a life through living kidney donation may visit livendonation california.org. Now therefore be resolved that in recognition of National Donate Life Month, that month of April twenty twenty-three is hereby proclaimed Donate Life Month in the City of Imperial. In doing so, we encourage all Californians to check yes online or when applying or when applying for or renewing their driver's license or I D card at the D M V. I don't think we have anybody for here for it, or do we? On to consent agenda. All items appearing under consent agenda will be acted upon by the city council in one motion without discussion. Should any council member or any person request that any item be considered separately, that item will be taken up at the time as determined by the mayor. Do I have any adjustments to the?
Yes, Madam Mayor and, and council. Claim number one-one-zero-two-two-four is for Mayor Pro Tem Amparano and one-one-oh-two-oh-four is, is for the mayor. And so those should be acted upon accordingly.
I'll make the motion to pull those two.
Have a second?
A second.
Have a motion and a second, please vote. Motion carries five-zero. Do we have a motion for the, to approve the consent agenda without those two?
Motion to approve the consent agenda without the two items that were pulled.
Second.
I have a motion by Obeso Martinez and a second by Tucker, please vote. Motion carries five-zero.
Motion to approve one-one-zero-two-zero-four.
Second.
Uh, Burnworth.
I have a motion by Obeso Martinez and a second by Tucker, please vote. Motion carries four-zero with one abstain by Mayor Burnworth. Have a motion for the final.
I'll make a motion to approve one-one-zero-two-two-four, Amparano.
Second.
I have a motion by Obeso Martinez and a second by Tucker, please vote. Motion carries four-zero with one abstain by Mayor Pro Tem Amparano. Moving on to items, F one, action items. Item F one, subject department of California Department of Resources Recycling and Recovery, CalRecycle.
Evening, council. As you may already know, CalRecycle offers funding and grant opportunities to cities throughout the state. The goal is to reduce, reuse, recycle solid waste, and the preservation of landfill capacity. CalRecycle requires the city council to adopt a resolution in the attached form. This resolution allows the city manager to execute all documents related to the application and grant management. And staff recommends adoption of resolution number twenty-two, twenty-three dash ten, and I'll stand with any questions that you may have.
Do we have any questions from the council? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Mendoza and a second by Councilmember Tucker, please vote. Motion carries five-zero. Thank you. Moving on to item F two. Subject purchase of equipment for Parks and Recreation Department, Mr. Lopez.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Staff had originally budgeted fifty thousand dollars in municipal budget approved for twenty-two, twenty-three for a compact-sized front-end tractor. The department, after a while, has determined during the course of operations that an articulated lift would be more of an urgent need at this moment than a front-end tractor. The department would also request that city council allow us to proceed with the purchase and allow the department and the city manager's office the discretion to approve quotes not to exceed the amount of fifty thousand. And you, and I'll stand for any questions.
Definitely. I mean, I know what this is for, but what is our use for this?
Tree trimming.
For the tree trimming, our bucket truck's not doing it, and it's too heavy to get into those areas.
No, so the bucket truck and Jackie's equipment has been very helpful. There are certain areas throughout the city where we have to drive on to the right of way, and it's very hard to do that with a truck that weighs that much without compromising sidewalks and different things. This piece of equipment allows us to drive the actual vehicle with the tow behind. It's more of a compact piece of equipment, let, weighs a lot less, and it, it still, it allows us to reach at the same height.
Let me ask one additional question. This isn't enough to do those park lights, are they?
Yes.
So we can reach those highlights?
Yeah, so it's fifty-five feet vertically, so this also allows us to get right up on to different things and get closer. And vertically, we can reach the baseball field lights as well.
Awesome.
Over to it.
I have a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Amparano and a second by Councilmember Mendoza, please vote.
A on it.
They haven't ordered one yet.
So there are, there is product availability right away. What I did ask for is the city might, just in case they sell it in the meantime, but there is some available now.
Moving on. Oh, sorry. Motion carries five-zero. Sorry, Madam Clerk. Moving on to item F three, adoption of vehicle use policy, Mrs. Smith.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the council. We would request approval and adoption of the vehicle use policy. The purpose of the policy is to address the use of city-owned and privately-owned vehicles operated in the course of city business. The use of city-owned vehicles shall be relied upon as the primary means of vehicle usage as it provides the greatest control over operating costs, usage, maintenance, inspection, and insurance. And this policy, the policy provisions apply to all vehicles operated and driven in the course of city business. And I will stand for any questions.
I have a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Amparano and a second by Councilmember Obeso Martinez, please vote. Motion carries five-zero.
I could, I guess I should have asked this before. It's not gonna change my vote. Do we, is this replacing a policy and, or do we not have one and this is a new policy?
It is a new policy and encompasses quite a bit.
Thank you.
Moving, moving on to item F four, subject energy sustainability business case study. Mr. Marita.
Yes, Madam Mayor and, and council. What this item would do if approved by the council, it would allow Schneider Electric to perform a, a business with what was referred to as a business case analysis. And what that would basically provide us is information about potential improvements that could be made with the idea being that energy savings would, uh, uh, pay the cost of, of those improvements. And at this point, what you'll note from the staff report is that this portion of, of the, of that whole process is done at, at no expense to the city. Schneider recognizes that we have a procurement policy and there's state law in the Public Contracts Code that would be implicated before we proceed with actual work. But this, so this is work they do with the understanding that there is that process. Mr. Colby from Schneider Electric is also participating in this meeting by way of Zoom, and he can answer any other questions you might have with respect to this letter.
Have any questions from the council?
Yes, if you could just kinda explain the process.
Sure. Hello, this is Brian Colby. Good evening, Mayor Burnworth and council. Thanks for having us and giving me an opportunity to speak. Yeah, so, so the basic process, we call it a business case, and we would, we would collaborate with your city staff from the, can you hear me? I'm sorry?
Yes, we can hear you.
So we would collaborate with your city staff on, on the front end, and all we would need, so we, I'll back up. We start off with a letter of, a letter of interest that would be signed, and that would give us the ability to allocate resources within Schneider to come to the city, take a look at the facilities, work with your staff to understand processes and areas where we could find improvements. And then at the end of that, we would generate a report that we would furnish back to the city and talk about the different areas where energy savings would be the main scope of, uh, of the opportunities that we would uncover. And in addition to that, we would be talking about the feasibility of the regional sports park that the City of Imperial has expressed interest in learning more about and find ways to, you know, make it come to fruition, and Schneider would be able to help with that as well down the road.
Dennis, whenever we were looking, did we actually go? Dennis, whenever we were looking, did we actually go out and try and find someone to do this or did they come to us? And if so, were they the only company that came to us asking to do this type of study?
Yes, we we did have discussion with with uh other folks, there are other folks that do similar things. We felt like uh Schneider uh was was best positioned to uh do the best job at at this point uh in time, uh Schneider, I I I believe is also doing at uh has uh already engaged in this process and is doing work with the City of El Centro uh as well as Central High School District. Uh, so because there there isn't any cost involved, we we did not proceed through our usual proc- procurement process, although we did oh, uh, uh test the market, if you will, in terms of the availability and we felt like Schneider uh would provide the best service at this point.
And I just also wanted to find out if Schneider does this study and it is used at a later time to make any changes or improvements and we do go through the proper pers- procurement from that, I'm wanting to ensure or make sure that there's nothing proprietary that is included in that uh study results saying that this service needs to be done, but Schneider happens to be the only one that can do that.
Uh, this is Brian again, and and that, yeah, that's not the case, nothing in the, there's no obligation to the city to do anything or exclude anything or there's no proprietary information that will be shared um through the report that the city wouldn't. Once the report's furnished to the city, the city has discretion to use it however they please.
And and whenever Schneider prepares their proposal in response to the RFP for the work, is any of the cost of the study passed along as part of that co- that proposal?
No, it's not.
Thank you.
Have any other questions? With that, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion, authorization to submit letter of interest to Schneider Electric for business case study involving energy sustainability and regional park evaluation.
Have a second? Have a motion by Councilmember Tucker and a second by Mayor Protem Amparano, please vote.
Motion carries five, zero.
Moving on to um G department reports or item G one department reports, do we have any department reports? Chief, Frank Shaw.
Yes, I'd like to report that uh in the month of March, we met with the recruits at the Imperial Valley College Police Academy uh with the hopes that we can draw them in to uh to work for us. Keeping uh the talent here in the valley helps retain uh officers for our positions. Um, we've been working with our El Centro uh police counterparts. Uh, we've used some of their equipment to deploy around our city for crime detection uh equipment, uh specifically the thefts calls, um, so we're we're excited to use some of that at this point. Uh, met with the Imperial County Sheriff's Department, um, kicked off initial talks for the MOU for the dispatch services and we'll be uh moving that forward a little bit. And finally, we met with the uh Imperial Unified School District in regards to the SRO uh MOU. And uh those are initial talks as well and looking at uh some of the things that we may need to to move uh moving forward, so. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Any others?
Uh, Madam Mayor, just really quick, uh, James kinda went over the autism event we're gonna have this Saturday here at Eager from twelve to five, so I kinda wanted to invite everybody from the public, everybody in here to attend, I think it's gonna be a really great thing uh for a really good cause, um, Colorfest. Right after that, uh, April twenty-second, uh, downtown Imperial from five to nine. And then also, uh, summer programs are coming down, they're gonna kick off June twelfth. Uh, we encourage anybody watching that's uh sixteen years of age or older to apply for summer uh program uh jobs that we have available through the city, uh, and uh that's all I have.
When will those jobs be posted?
They're already posted on our City of Imperial website and they close uh next Friday.
Awesome, thank you. Do we have any other department reports?
Yes, ma'am, uh, the sinkhole pipe repair at the Sky Ridge Park area. Object is done outside of our on in the tree.
Good job, good to hear. Hopefully no more sinkholes anytime soon. Do you have any other department reports? Seeing none, um, Mr. Marita for city manager report?
Uh, yes, Madam Mayor, just just very quickly, um, the the uh the city, Assistant City Manager and myself are attending a training, that's why we're not there. Uh, the training is is sponsored by the California Joint Powers Insurance Authority on the subject of uh executive uh training. And uh the JPIA uh provides uh this, uh, the uh the training at no expense to the city and and includes uh, uh, the the training and the hotel and and meals. So it was, it was an opportunity that I felt uh uh very important to take advantage of of uh some, some excellent speakers, retired city managers, um, uh, many of whom are involved with the uh International City Managers Association. Uh, with respect to the the program that Chief Crankshaw mentioned, uh, we we will be bringing to you uh uh the details of that program for your, for your approval. Uh, the idea being that it 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 would be a, we see it as a potential uh uh way to uh 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 re- recruit uh uh police officers. And and so that that would be the goal of uh engaging uh uh candidates at that early stage. Uh, so, but it'll be coming before you because it will, it will involve uh, uh, creating uh positions for for uh uh the recruits. And so uh I'll 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 report further with respect to the thi- this training at at your next council meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marita. Moving on to mayor and council member reports, we'll start to my right with uh Councilmember Mendoza.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, we've been pretty busy since the, we last met, um, I we, I did attend the ribbon cutting ceremony at the Heritage at Dahlia Ranch. That was a great opportunity to see the work that's been done out there. Um, the ribbon cutting comes a little late, they've actually already had a good section of homes that have already been sold and occupied, it's just they, they realized they had never really done a, had the opportunity to do a ribbon cutting, so they did it then. Um, I was able to attend the State of the County address in Calipatria, um, got a lot of good informa- or got a little goo- good information of how, where the county is at right now. Um, myself and uh Mayor Protem Amparano and and Councilmember Ido Basomartinez were able to attend the little, uh, the Little League opening ceremonies. Um, the things were a little more rushed and unfortunately they were about an hour ahead of schedule, so the two, the other two weren't there for the first pitch, so it was left up to me and I am not a baseball player. Um, I can't say it got there before it hit the ground, but it did get to the catcher.
Like a typical Dodger fan.
Uh, we were able, I was also able to attend the League of California City um dinner up in uh Town Pump. It was a huge gathering of all the local officials and and city personnel. And uh we got, they have the opportunity, they give us an opportunity to do some bragging and I have to say, I'm pretty proud of Imperial and all the bragging we were able to do there, uh, uh, def- we definitely stood out. Um, we attended the Blues Brews and Barbecue and I thank everybody at the city staff, that was, event was awesome. It was a great turnout, the music was fantastic. I'm so happy that they moved that stage a little closer, so we got, we got people out there dancing, we had people just sitting out there watching the band and participating and I know it's a humongous un- undertaking to our staff and I thank each and every one of you, cuz that was, that was awesome. And then uh lastly, today I was able to attend the White House Infrastructure Roundtable with Congressman Raul Ruiz. Um, just they spent an hour laying out the type of funding that's coming down the pike, some's already available, there's more coming that'll be coming for different um, different buckets of money for different issues and it was just a kind of a, an informational uh type of thing. Um, we are, Tony already brought up the autism awareness and as as did Jimmy and we hope to see everybody there. And even though we currently do not employ dispatchers and we're going through a contract to continue working with the county, I'd be remiss if I didn't have a place in my heart for the uh April, month of April is National Telecommunicators Month. So to all of my fellow previous fellow dispatchers out there, thank you for all you do. That's a very tough job for some very special people and and I, I, I applaud all of you for the month of April for the National Tele- Telecommunicators in the week, or month, sorry. And that's it, I'm done.
Uh, moving on, uh, Councilmember Obaso Martinez.
So I attended a lot of the events that Miss uh Mendoza mentioned and then um I had the opportunity to attend the Imperial County Farm Bureau Ag Tour. Um, who knew there was different types of bees, I didn't know, I didn't know there was only honeybees. So I got to learn a lot about the different uh modalities of how we grow seed here, um, what they harvest here. So that was a really eye-opening experience, you live here in the valley and know that we have a lot of fields, but didn't know the processes behind that, so I was really grateful for that. I also attended the Best Step Forward Five K, that was really awesome last weekend. Um, that was one of our other autism support groups that we have here in the valley and so I took out our Boy Scout troop, Troop Forty Seventy, that's a local Boy Scout troop here. So I took them out, made them work and um they helped to volunteer their time as well. And then lastly, um, I serve on the mono board and a lot of our Frank Wright students went to our youth leadership conference, so we had over sixty students who attended from all over the Imperial Valley. So we're really thankful that our students came out and they did a a leadership conference, um, a half day, so they got to learn from a lot of different, um, people here in the valley. Um, STEM programs, leadership programs, career paths, and so thanks to our Frank Wright students for coming out.
They filling it up.
Uh, Mayor Protem Amparano.
So I just, I just have a couple of them, I uh, I did also get to attend the Cal Cities uh uh quarterly meeting in Winterha- in Winter Haven, Westmoreland. Uh, I think it went very well, very good attendance. Um, and so being the president of the, our division, my next goal is to bring that back to Imperial this next meeting, so. I'm gonna shoot for May to try to bring it somewhere in the City of Imperial, so we don't have to drive, everybody else will. Um, so good attendance on that, I did uh also get a chance to uh, was given the I was, you know, uh, chosen as a judge for a tri-tip. I do gotta say, that's tough. That's a tough job, um, a lot of good food, uh, the creativity behind it that people have is amazing. Um, so my hats off to all the, those that participated, uh, they made it very difficult. But um, I think it all worked out very well. Um, with that, um, please join us on Saturday for the uh Autism Fair. Like we have heard throughout today, um, I will be in the dunk tank. Uh, so come support, bring some money, throw a lot of balls and see if you can get me in the water, so definitely good cause, so I'm definitely looking forward to that. And then uh, just uh, I think we did pretty good after Monday's storm. I think we fared out pretty, pretty well, I don't see too much damages, but thanks to our crews, everything's looking really nice out there, so keep up the good work. Other than that, I'll leave the rest up to our Madam Mayor.
Yeah, so I also uh attended the League of Cities Dinner in Westmoreland and I'm very proud of all the hard work that our staff does and I get to brag on all of you. Um, I try to remind them all that we have the best staff, um, and we're doing amazing things, so thank you guys, cuz um, you make it really easy to brag on all of you. Um, I was also able to attend the tri-tip kickoff. Um, I gotta announce the winners and so that was cool, my kids were very upset that they were only there for ten minutes, cuz they had to go to their uncle's fortieth birthday party, so I think that speaks volumes that people of all ages love our events. Um, last week, the Mayor Protem, myself and uh assistant, city manager Dennis Marita and assistant city manager Alexis Brown, we all traveled back to Washington DC. Um, and met with our lobbyist group, which is David Church and Associates, um. We had meetings with, you know, Congressman Reese, we had meetings with Senator Feinstein's office, Senator Padilla's office. Um, Department of Parks, um, Department of Transportation, the COPS Division, uh Department of Justice. And what we do for all of those, there's various different grant applications that we have in and we like to put a face to it and really tell them, you know, why, you know, they should select us for their grant, um, but sometimes we get a lot of information from them. Um, you know, there's various different projects, you know, I know everybody's heard about our Highway Eighty-Six project. You know, for the beautification of that, we also talked about, we call it a town site project, which is a fourteen million dollar project to redo a lot of the s- um, a lot of the streets within uh the, we, well, we like all like to call Old Imperial. Um, so if awarded those, you know, the first three streets would be um, Seventh Street, Tenth Street and Fourteenth Street and those would be reconstruction. And with the storm, you know, sidewalk, curb, gutter, infrastructure and everything in place as well, so we're hopeful that we can get some of those monies and see some of the, you know, fruition of going back there. Um, come to life, last year we lobbied, one of them was for our incubator kitchen project, which we lobbied for that and we did just get awarded that, so it's nice to, you know, see you get some wins and your time's well spent, but our staff, our city manager staff, the Mayor Protem um, did an amazing job, so it's very stressful, you have to go back there and you know, you get intimidated at times, but it's great. And then um, came back and first thing Monday, we had, or Monday afternoon, uh, city manager and myself met with our state senator, uh, Steve Padilla's office, kinda introduced him about, you know, what the City of Imperial is, you know, projects that they can help him out, help us out on. And so we're gonna start working with our state lobbying team to see how we can help each other, but for me, one of my goals is to build uh our relationship with our legislators, so they know that we are the City of Imperial, we're not the County of Imperial. Um, you know, and just kinda rebuild those so they can help us out, so. With that, I will adjour this meeting at seven forty-six until the next uh regularly scheduled meeting, Wednesday, April nineteenth at seven PM.